I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, December 19th, 6:00 PM. All commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner's More Cook and Commissioners Hampton, who are absent and excused. It looks like we have no non-agenda public comments this evening, but we have some minutes to approve, so once you all have had a chance to review the minutes, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
A second?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes stand approved as written. There's no new business this evening, no public hearing, and with that, we will go ahead and start into the study session on potential accessory dwelling unit, otherwise known as ADUs, privacy code amendments. And with that, I will hand it over to Michael Cotterman, or actually Dave Boyd, Senior Planner with the City of Bothell. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, and good evening. I just have a short presentation tonight. With the adoption of the recent ADU amendments, council adopted your recommendations on September 18th. Council directed staff and planning commission to consider additional measures to address privacy concerns when new two-story ADUs are built on or near setback lines or within the rear setback, with the new exception for Carriage House ADUs on alleys. And these are not great illustrations of that, as they're set in these idyllic settings with no visible neighbors around. But the concern was with the examples that we provided them. To some degree, this one, if you were, if this applicant was to build a second story on the garage, and instead of a five-plex with parking next door, that was somebody's backyard. The concern is that those, that upper level could have windows overlooking the backyard. So that was kind of the crux of the concern, and this is one example that illustrates that to some extent. In this case, the proposal here, the elevation on the left is the elevation facing the adjacent side property line. So they're not proposing any windows directly facing over the neighboring property, but the code doesn't prohibit that. So the question is, should the code prohibit or limit windows in this situation? Or windows or potentially balconies and decks that could overlook the surrounding properties? And should we consider that when we don't limit openings or decks for single-family homes, which can be built taller and built to the same side setback line? We're joined now with, by Mike Stanger from Arch, who helped prepare some of these materials and has been helping us with the ADU amendments all along. Probably a more germane example, this, another example that you're familiar with from the previous deliberations on the previous amendments. If you build a two-story ADU on or near a side setback line, and in this case, the proposed two-story ADU is six feet, just one foot off of the minimum side setback. And again, these plans don't include any windows facing the adjacent property, but the question is, should the code prohibit or limit them? And again, it could also apply to a deck that would overlook an adjacent property. So in your packet, I included some areas where our code currently addresses these kind of privacy issues. In our downtown area, we have some provisions protecting single-family parcels from adjacent multifamily developments, so it's a little bit different situation. But there, we have a provision that decks and balconies overlooking the adjacent residences are prohibited along the setback line. It doesn't specify how far back from the setback line they need to be, but, so that's probably something we, if we were to go this direction, probably want to be a little more specific. And then, "The size and quantity of windows facing the adjacent residence shall be limited and located to maximize privacy." So the first provision, the prohibition of decks and balconies, is a prescriptive requirement, which is easier to review for and to enforce. The second is a guideline requiring somewhat more difficult discretionary review. And I've reviewed this issue with our development review planners and permit texts that are responsible for making these decisions, and they pretty unanimously prefered a more prescriptive approach. It just is clear for them. And then, I forgot to include the second example that was in your code. Lower Maywood also has similar provisions that are really more guidelines than prescriptive restrictions, similar to these examples from Santa Cruz, California, that give guidance but not specific prescriptive controls. And then, other jurisdictions provide design and guidance to address privacy issues without necessarily placing any requirements in the code, either guidelines or requirements. And this is an example from the City of Seattle's handbook on backyard cottages. So basically, they're saying, leaving it up to the designer and the applicant to consider these things and to work with your neighbors, but not, there are no prescriptive guidelines or prescriptive requirements or guidelines that are actually in the code. And all of these options are potentially available to us. We haven't done any sort of an ADU handbook, but that's one of the things that we've been discussing with other Arch jurisdictions, is creating some sort of informational guide that would help people figure out and deal with the issues around creating ADUs. And whether we do it jointly with other cities or do our own, our Development Services group is developing, just a handout, a flyer on AD regulations. So this is potentially the sort of thing, something that we could include there without making any code amendments at all. And that's really about as far as I've gotten on my analysis and review of what the possibilities are. So I'd open it up at this point for questions from staff. We're interested in getting direction from Planning Commission on preferred approaches and any additional analysis that you desired. And then, we're scheduled for a public hearing on this issue, so we would bring back proposed code language if indeed you feel like there is a need to do that, or potentially proposed informational materials that we could, that could address this issue as well at the public hearing scheduled for January 16th. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Great, thanks, Dave. Yeah, this is a study session, so people, feel free to just jump in and ask questions of staff or to each other, so.
So to clarify, the existing code does not regulate privacy between single-family residences, but there are provisions concerning privacy with the multifamily?
In a few situations, in the downtown regulations and in the Lower Maywood regulations, we've addressed that.
But maybe it is kind of discretionary as opposed to?
Yes.
How was the experience in interpreting that 1264-210B5, limited and located to maximize privacy?
We actually haven't had a lot of development directly adjacent to single-family zoning to date. So when I met with the development review team, I didn't hear any specific examples where they've struggled with this, but like I said, they, I guess, even though the guidelines and the discretionary review gives them a little more flexibility, which they say sometimes is useful to have, in general, though, they felt a clearer, more prescriptive code direction was easier for them to apply.
Then similarly, have there been any issues with the other provision along the setback line? You noted it doesn't indicate how far, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Is it a foot back? Is it five feet back? Any issues arise with that?
Again, none that I'm aware of, but development immediately adjacent to a single-family has been limited. I think the only, only one that I can think of off the top of my head is a project that's just starting construction, Beardsley South Town Homes, just this side of the Village of Beardsley Crossing Development. That does butt up against some single-family zoning along Ross Road.
Thanks for the presentation. I generally wouldn't want to be more stringent on ADUs versus just regular single-family houses, but it does seem like we're falling between single-family and multifamily. By adding an ADU, it could be another family living there, and it's sort of multifamily light. So if we were to do something in the language directly related to ADUs, and let's say we go more discretionary review, it's not going to have a lot of teeth to what I think the city could do as far as the design goes. Would we ever consider including that in the single-family design guidelines, that, you know, you have to limit your windows adjacent to adjacent residences?
Well, we haven't done that to date. I think that's a step that we're, I guess, reluctant to get into. It hasn't, and we haven't heard, you know, heard that there's a problem to be solved there. In fact, we don't really know that there's a problem with the two-story ADUs, but it was an issue that was raised as a potential problem.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I guess I don't really see that it becomes a major issue, but look forward to hearing you guys' comments.
I guess my question has a little bit to do with, I think, both of the previous speakers. In item four there, what does it mean to overlook adjacent residences? Is that, that seems really ambiguous to me. Does it mean you're higher than them, looking down, or does it mean you're looking at the house or their yard, or is, or just anything adjacent to the existing lot?
But I could give a, off the top of my head, interpretation, or I could put it on our director.
Well, maybe there's not an answer, I guess.
But what I was going to say is, what we do when we have, when those questions come up, if somebody challenges our decision or our interpretation, we go to whether there's a definition in the code. I doubt that there's a definition in our code about what overlook means. After that, we go to the dictionary definition and apply it as logically as we can. So I would think that to overlook is to look at from above at some, from some degree.
Okay. So it might, and maybe there's not an answer to this, but it might mean no second-story decks, as opposed to maybe a first-floor patio deck or something like that, potentially could be an interpretation. So is, and from your, you know, the formulation of this code, and maybe, Mike, based on some of your experiences, the, is the intent of this section to provide backyard privacy for neighbors? So in other words, let them recreate without people looking down on them, or is it more building to building, or is there a sense of that?
I think it could be both. I think that the prohibition on decks is probably as twofold. One, to, so that you aren't, you know, looking directly without any barrier at all over somebody's backyard, or even into their home. And second, I guess one reason for being a little more strict with decks and balconies is the sound possibility, so that if you're relaxing in your backyard, you're not hearing somebody else's barbecue on their deck.
And I can't speak to the existing code and the intent of that, but in terms of the genesis of this particular issue, when this came up at the council, I think it had more to do with adding something to someone's backyard that could then look into the adjacent backyard. That was the issue that I was hearing in the discussion from the council, and why they wanted us to take another look at that.
Okay. I guess where I'm at right now, and, you know, certainly, nothing's baked in at this point, but it seems to me, it is kind of multifamily, but it really, you know, particularly if it's attached, it's not multifamily, really. It's one structure. If you have an ADU in the back, I don't know, I guess I'm still looking at it as it's not necessarily changing the character of the neighborhood, it's still single-family, and so I guess I would prefer not to put restrictions on that, because you have an owner that's trying to put an ADU in a small space, and then you're further limiting on where they can put their windows, and so it, I think, just limits what they can do in their design to make it effective, especially if they have a garage under it, and, so they're constrained already, and so to put additional constraints on it, to me, seems a little bit tough. So I guess, at this point, for me, it seems like, even though it's a little more work for the staff, it seems like guidelines would be better, you know, because I think if you've got someone that's going to build an ADU, they've got a neighbor, and it seems like they're probably not going to want to look down on their neighbors either. I mean, if it's privacy, it's, you would think it's privacy both ways, but anyway, that's kind of my initial take.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just pick up on something that Commissioner Cecil, you referenced attached versus detached, and I think that's one of the things that's come up in the staff discussion of this, that's created a bit of a challenge for us, because if it is an attached accessory dwelling unit, it could be in addition to an existing single-family home. And in that case, it's part of the primary structure, we really wouldn't treat it any differently than we do the primary structure, even though it could have the same potential impacts of what we're talking about here with the detached ADU.
So it does not apply to an attached ADU? This requirement would not be applied to an attached?
Well, that's part of the question is, should it? And under what circumstances would it apply? Because then we're starting to, currently it would not.
Currently doesn't, okay.
Right. We're really talking about detached that are, that are in the backyard close to the setback lines. And very rarely, you know, it could happen, but very rarely, would you get a primary structure that's set that far back on the lot?
Yeah.
But it could happen. You could have one that's somewhere midway on the lot, and the one next to it is closer to the street, and they're offset so that you're looking into the backyard of the house next door. Or a taller house, a previous house I lived in in Seattle, our backyard was against the side yard of the lot next door, and there was a three-story, it was all legal, three-story house built. Ours was a lower lot, it was all looking right down into our backyard, even though we had a six-foot fence, there was no privacy there. Did we like that? No.
Yeah.
But it's part of, you know, it was also part of the urban living, and quite frankly, after a time, we were less and less aware of it.
Yeah.
So it's, I can understand the concern and the issue, but it starts to get a little more complex when we talk about attached versus detached. And would we apply the same thing to an attached ADU, or just an expansion of a primary structure?
And I guess maybe the other question to ask, too, is, you know, is it better to have a big, huge, two-story wall right next to you, or is it better to have something that's broken up a little bit? I mean, it's not, that's not really a privacy issue, but it's more of a aesthetics issue. So there's, I don't know, it seems like there's enough things that are kind of moving parts that it's hard to just say, you know. So anyway, that's my kind of initial take.
Actually, just, so I think Roger's last comment was valuable, in that I looked around and we were all like, because I think, just so we don't miss it, I think, from what I could see, that maybe, I think, the four of us here might be uncomfortable with just a sheer wall, and we'd like to see almost maybe, I'm not saying we are, because we're just having a study session, but maybe some type of requirement where windows or some type of accenting is necessary to make it, you know, if you're, so that a, I don't know, and whether they're high, kind of higher windows, you know, just something to make it look like not just this wall right up against, you know. So, I mean, I think that's something we should look into, I guess, if staff could kind of present some ideas on that.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement. I know it takes some work, but I really like the guideline approach to trying to influence the design rather than the regulate, because there are going to be some situations based on existing trees and everything, where you're going to want to have your windows on the south side to get light in your house, and it may conflict with something that we try to put in the code. So if we could do something similar to what we see up here, I think that would be a good start. Also, to note that detached structures, at least from the memo, that has a reduced height anyway, correct, compared to a house, so, you know, we're not looking at 35 feet, they've got a limited height. So it's already, I think, a reduction of privacy invasion as opposed to just a continued single-family structure.
So to echo some of what was said, in particular, Commissioner Cecil, I'm a little more sympathetic to the limitation of decks. You know, on deck, someone is present there, you see them, they see you, and the, at least perceived intrusion on privacy is much greater. Windows, just from what I've observed, particularly building to building, neither party wants to be staring into the other window, so that, you know, architects do tend to offset them. You're not going to set yours right now, and I'm looking at our development, which was put in 30 years ago, and the houses are set so the windows are not, you know, right on top of each other. You work it a little bit. So to the extent there's a requirement at all, I would say discretionary on that. The decks, I could be more comfortable with limiting those overlooking your out there, up, down into the yard, and that's a change and different. See that.
Can you hear me? Okay, there we go. I guess I would agree with that as well, with the decks, maybe on the second floor. First floor, I don't, I don't see any issue with that. That can be easily addressed with fences or landscape, that kind of thing, that's no different than any other situation in development, but, so I'd be, I guess I'd be open to limiting decks on that setback that are overlooking, and I don't know what we're overlooking, but I think it's just a second-floor deck, really, in my mind, because whether it's a backyard or, you know, the back of their house or whatever, it's still privacy, so.
Yeah, and just to kind of comment on that, I can see where you all are going with that. I do know that of a current ADU in Bothell, in the downtown, it's an older place, but it is above a garage, and it has an, it has a deck out the back through sliding doors, because it's like, it's a studio apartment with a deck. And it basically just looks out off into the woods, so, but I can see where over time, that's probably going to be less and less the case, you know, at least near downtown. So I think in that case, it really worked well, so, but, but I could see, I don't know. It's tough, because once it's there and trees come down, or things change over time, you have this deck, and it's kind of grandfathered in, so, I don't know.
Yeah, and I, you know, maybe, maybe what we're talking about is prohibiting a side deck, really. I mean, still, you could do a deck in the back that, maybe the end of that, the end of that deck might be adjacent to the yard, but the deck generally faces the other side or the back or the front.
Okay, so yeah, Dave, so recommendations to us on like side versus back, and so it sounds like maybe a side deck would be a little bit more intrusive.
Yeah, and I guess I'd love to hear your feedback, too, Dave. We're just throwing out ideas here, and so if you have any thoughts.
Well, one thought is that, given some interest in that, we could come back with some potential regulations that are maybe a little more, more specific than what I showed you in the downtown, that at least as far as what it means, what the distance from that side setback might be. And also, kind of do some brainstorming illustrations about situations where it might seem reasonable to have a deck in that, and where you might, an applicant might run up against that kind of a regulation. I meant to mention in the, in the presentation, too, I talked about prescriptive guidelines, but we didn't really talk about what they could be other than that deck requirement. One approach would be to limit clear glazing on walls on setbacks that is below a certain sill height, say six feet high. So you could have high windows on a wall that basically look out into the, into the sky or the tree scape, or you could have obscure glazing or glass block lower than that, but nothing that would provide direct views in. Not necessarily advocating for that, but that's the kind of more prescriptive approach that, or regulation that we might consider if Planning Commission and council were inclined to go that way.
Yeah, because it does sound like, according to your notes, that council is asking more for, it does seem like they have some concerns on privacy, right? And that's one of the ones I was looking at. I wanted to get a better idea, Dave, about, so what are permitting, like, if somebody wants to, if somebody has a home, established home, they have a garage, they want to turn that into an ADU, what are they, kind of like, what are the, what are the permitting, what are the steps they go through and kind of the general costs associated with that? So I need to have that in my mind so that I think about that when we're, because basically, this is a great opportunity, I think we talked about it, to create a ton of affordable housing need in the community, and a way of making it more of a soft, kind of, I guess, missing middle, or just, you know, kind of a soft affordable housing approach rather than a large complex.
Yeah. I can come back with the more complete listing of steps, and I can't really, I wouldn't hazard to guess at cost right now, but basically, the steps are, this is a single-family building permit, a variety of a single-family building permit. Again, bring the application, include that as part of the packet, so it has the checklist of all the requirements. Typically, it requires a survey, particularly if they are approaching a setback line, so that we can make sure, if it's, if it's attached, if it's part of a house that's clearly far from a setback, we may waive the need for a survey. And then, just needs to include plans, sections, if there's structural work, there may need to be a stamp by a structural engineer. Single-family designs don't necessarily need to be done by an architect. Single-family designs don't necessarily need to be done by an architect, but homeowners can, can do their own plans to, you know, up to a point. And then they, they basically go through a, a very similar review process to any single-family addition project.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for that.
Question. Now, we've talked about this in, in several instances in the context of converting a garage. They would still need to maintain parking, wouldn't they?
They need to provide parking at the minimum for the single-family, the primary dwelling unit, plus one for the ADU, so.
So if you're converting your garage, closing that off, you still need a place to put two cars?
Yeah, off-street.
Yes.
And so that, it doesn't need to be covered, so you can convert the garage and replace it with the parking outside the garage. And most, the typical single-family home with a two-car garage provides for two cars in the garage and typically two cars on the apron of the garage. And so they're already, and, and they're only required to have three off-street just for the single-family. So in that situation, they wouldn't even have to add a, an additional parking space for the ADU.
Yeah, I know, our two cars are never in our garage, but.
Right.
But parking is a concern around, and when you go around the streets here, there are a lot of cars coming out onto the streets these days, so I would want to make sure we maintain that as well. Thank you.
I was just wondering, because there's some questions in here with regards to, you know, setbacks, and do we want to look at, let's say, a detached, well, let's just take an example, a detached ADU, whether existing or not. Well, I guess it'd be, also say, it does, a, a new ADU that's going to be put in place, would there be, does, does it make any sense to change the setbacks with regards to what the zoning is for a particular area? So basically, what I'm saying is, the closer you get to downtown, the closer you can put your ADU to the, you know, five, you know, whatever the setback rate regulations are now, maybe keep them, but as you go into more of neighborhoods and even, you know, as the properties get bigger, maybe you, maybe the setback should be a little bit more, maybe they should progressively be set back a little bit further to kind of keep more in line with the feel of the neighborhood? I don't know how commissioners would feel about that, or even if that's a idea worth pursuing. Have you, have you heard of anything like that as a requirement?
The only situation like that that I'm aware of in our, in our code right now is we did create additional setback requirements for accessory structures, not necessarily ADUs, that exceeded a certain size. I think it was 1,200 square feet. So, and, and that really only applies on, on fairly large lots, because there is a 5% lot coverage limit for accessory structures. So if you have a large lot, if you have a one-acre lot, you could build a, a large detached garage, and there was concern about, and this was all part of a code amendment that was in, that was initiated because of construction of some fairly industrial-type accessory structures in single-family neighborhoods. And, and so the additional setback, along with the additional setback, there was a, a landscape buffer requirement in that case. I think that would be, I guess I'm struggling to think of how we would do something like that, sort of a graduated setback from, from denser areas to, to less dense areas. And again, we'd be restricting ADUs in ways that we don't restrict primary residences. So a person or, or an attached ADU, so as, somebody could add on to their single-family house right up to the five-foot setback. But if they wanted to make it a detached unit, you know, why should that have a, a different setback?
We could also, not to put Mike on the spot, but I'll put Mike on the spot. If there are other, other jurisdictions that use that approach, I'm not aware of any, but I know with the, the task force you're working with from other cities, that maybe there's some information out there about alternative setback requirements for, for ADUs.
All right, um, let's see. And I had another thought, just as we were talking about decks, I mean, would there be any, if, if there are going to be a second-story deck, I'm not so concerned about the, the ground-floor ones, but if, on a detached ADU, also, I keep going back to the detached example, because I do feel like it's different. I, I'm in favor of them, I think they, they, they could be hugely successful, but I guess it's, I don't know, it's a little bit different. Could we limit, I mean, or should we limit the size of the deck? If people are worried about, you know, maybe having a renter or a person living in the ADU that, you know, has a lot of late-night parties or whatever, and they're living in the ADU, and they have a, they have a large deck attached to it, I mean, or, or is it something we more just kind of let happen, you know, instead of be more kind of as a guideline rather than restrictive? Because obviously, the size of a deck can certainly change what happens on the deck. I don't know.
Interesting thought. I guess from my standpoint, I don't know if, if we can address parties or that kind of stuff with, with this code. I think we're really talking about, I think, sightlines and regular level noise, I think, which, I mean, parties, I think you, you need to deal with that some other way. You know, I mean, there's code against, you know, having, there's noise ordinances, in other words, that kind of thing. So I guess, I, I guess to your thought, I'm, I'm not as concerned, I don't think about the size. And I'm also just wondering if there's maybe some things we can do if, if an applicant does want to put a deck on that side, you know, up against this. Is there anything we can do, they could do design-wise, whether it's, you know, bringing a half-wall up or something, or, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know if there is. But I'd be willing to, I'm just thinking about trying to, trying to give as much flexibility to these ADUs as possible, because they're, they're shoehorned in, you know, and, and we're talking, some of these will be in really tight areas. And so from, from my standpoint, it would be great to give them as much flexibility as possible. Like, you're talking about the south side, you know, and if, if it's, the south side's right there and you, there really wants to be a deck there, shoot, well, you can't do that, because you got to put it on the north side where there's no sun, you know, so. I don't know. So that's, I guess, another thought to consider.
Another, just to, I'm a planner, so I overcomplicate things, but I, I have to deal with these interpretations sometimes, so I, I try to think these through. There could be a situation, particularly in Bothell, where we have a lot of topography, where you have a, an, an ADU, single-story, built in the backyard, because of the topography, it's overlooking the house behind it. So whether it's a deck, or a patio, or a window, we're, we're dealing with the same issue, but the circumstance is very different in that case. So whatever regulations, and I say this for a couple of reasons. One is, whatever regulations we put in place are not going to address every single situation. I can guarantee you from experience, somebody will have something that doesn't fit what we come up with. But we can, but it's, but it's attempting to address the majority of those situations. And that gets to the second point I have, which is to, as we look at these from a staff standpoint, one of the things that we're going to do is keep coming back to, what is the issue that we're trying to address? So it's, it's a privacy issue, but what does that mean in terms of what we can do to regulate? So if it's, as Commissioner Cecil said, I think it has more to do with sightlines. It's not necessarily a, a specific event. It's more about the, the habitable space and how that relates to the area around it, whether it's adjacent or within the backyard of the primary structure. So if we're dealing with privacy and we're dealing with sightlines, we can look at other things that may be separate from the structure itself, having to do with landscaping, or a setback if that's going to do it. But I, I think there are different ways, and, and that gets back to the guidelines that Dave was talking about in this example. I think those are some of the things that, that we would be looking at. And that's kind of, I'm asking the question, I guess, I'm not putting in form of a question, but I think I'm really asking a question from the commission, because I'm hearing from you that you're really focused more on guidelines, but looking at some specific examples of how that might be applied. So i- is that the direction that, that you're giving us, is to, to look more at the different types of, of tools that we would have to deal with this from a, a guideline standpoint, a design standpoint? And maybe introduce some prescriptive items where that would make sense in, in more circumstances? Does that, does that make sense? In terms of the approach that we're, that we're talking about?
Seems to be what I've heard so far, Kevin.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, but to, to kind of go back to something you referred to, we've talked a little, quite a bit about the decks and really focused on the second, second story. You raised the issue of, you know, topography and first-floor decks. I am not, I don't see that as much of an issue, because if you don't have a deck, you still got a back, you know, if there's space there, and don't build a deck, okay, I'm standing out on the grass, the same issue would be there. If you're concerned about looking out from the deck on the first floor.
Right.
You'd have that issue. And in both cases, it could be mitigated by landscaping. Landscaping is much more difficult on the second story. So I do think to the extent that we're going to be prescriptive, it's, it's the second story where the concern is.
Okay.
And with, with discretionary, with guidelines, the, the more clarity you can give through examples, I think the, the less likely there'll be confusion. And as you say, there's always the exception. Whatever you put out there, there's going to be a case that a square peg in your round holes.
Thank you.
So kind of, I guess, continuing on with that thought line, I would rather see it all guidelines, and I, I don't know if that's possible, but. Okay, I think we're, we're good. Just going to not touch it. Feedback here. Let's turn it off. Okay. So I guess to address your question to the commission about what, you know, what, what would we like to see, what form would we like to see this in? For me, I, I, like I said, I like the guidelines and, and what I, I guess, envision in guidelines is, are there, there's objectives, right? There's some, there's, here's the issues we're trying to deal with, here's the objectives, here's what we would like the result to be. And we're not exactly telling you, applicant, how to get there, but we don't want a direct sightline, for instance, from, you know, your second floor down to the, you know, or whatever, however specific it needs to be. Yeah, and then there might be some tools, yeah, I mean, that might be helpful. You know, stuff like this is helpful sometimes, just to get people oriented to what the issues are. And so I guess that would be my preference. You know, my, my, I guess, second tier would be if we need actual regulations, prescriptive regulations, then we would add those if we thought they were just absolutely necessary. So that's kind of my thought.
Yeah, I guess, it, I'm also, I think, along with the other commissioners, more in lines of the guidelines approach, but I, I do feel like there are, there are some prescriptive things that will, I mean, will find as we talk more about this, and probably once we get more information back from, from Dave in the following meeting, maybe we'll be able to see this and as we think about it more. But one being like, say, the, the second-story deck facing the, the next-door neighbor on the, on the side. I think that'd be like one, like example of one that it seems like, at least in my mind, that, that would make a lot of sense. I don't know, I just, because we, while this is a great opportunity to open it up to a lot of new additional dwelling units in the city, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's going to be things we've, hopefully not major things, but things we've overlooked when, when they start going up, because I think they will be rather popular. And so, I don't know. But I, I'm just trying to think of what, what the other types of prescriptive things are. I, I think we maybe touched on it earlier with regards to just a, a wall without any windows. I personally don't like that. So that would be another, maybe something, wall would be a guideline, I think it'd be, it would be nice to have something in the code where there needs to be some type of texture there, or, or windows or something, so. But I don't, I don't want to over-prescribe this whole thing. I think that I do want most of it to be guidelines. That's just my take.
And real quick question to Dave, if I recall correctly, we currently have a requirement in the code that the ADU has to have similar materials as the primary structure, is that right?
Currently, yeah, that's a requirement for all accessory structures. And that's one requirement that Planning Commission, last time, it wasn't within the scope, but said that with the 2019 ADU amendments that come out of the ARCH study, that there seemed to be consensus that, or at least a, a majority of the Planning Commission was in favor of getting rid of that requirement and not, and, and in other words, and making it easier to, for example, do a, a modern-style prefab ADU as a, as a, an option, as opposed to something that looks like the primary structure. So that's something that I, we've got on our to-do list, potential amendment in the future. I do want to make sure that, make a clarification. When we were talking about guidelines, I kind of introduced what might be considered two different kinds of guidelines, guidelines that are actually in the code, and more educational materials that wouldn't be in the code, but like this handbook. I'll have to do a little more research to see if any of these actually are in the, in the Seattle code, but my understanding is that this is really just, they're saying, we're not going to try to codify all of these situations, but these are, this is a, an array of issues that you should consider and, and that you should work with your neighbors to, to address these, rather than trying to include it in, in the code, either in the, in the form of requirements or guidelines. So I, I'd be interested to know if Planning Commission might be inclined to, to recommend that approach rather than any actual code amendments.
That would be what I would envision. I mean, I guess I'm in favor of that.
So I have two commissioners here saying yes. I'm still not sure, but Kevin, are you kind of, are you still thinking on that as well? And while you're, let me, can you think on it a little longer? I have a question while you're thinking on it. If, if, it's going to be the City of Bothell creating these kind of guidelines or this kind of packet, or whatever it's getting, form it's going to be in, whether it's the City of Bothell or collaborating with maybe other neighboring cities, or however it would through ARCH. I just, in my mind, I'm thinking like, and I don't know what, what this would be, but I would assume, rather than reinventing the wheel, there's probably a lot of, I would assume there's some pretty good guides out there already that, that are kind of popular and like, oh yeah, this works for cities like, like Bothell. I don't know, that would, that would be a recommendation of mine to maybe search for something like that than, rather than having to spend a lot of staff time on creating something new, to, to just spend a little bit of time to find out if there's already something that exists, and if there is, then this is basically where you can direct people and say, oh, there's already something there, here's a good thing to look at, and we like that.
We, we try to plagiarize as much as we can.
Okay.
Yeah, we all do. But to the- But to the question about a separate guidelines document as opposed to incorporating the guidelines in the code, now it would certainly seem to me that a separate document would be more flexible, more readily amended. I could be wrong, but that's how it would seem to me, as opposed to something in the code that requires greater action. If in both cases they're guidelines, is there a distinction in the application? A code guideline is still not a requirement, it's more of an educational suggestion, things to think about.
The guidelines in the code, they give the reviewer somewhat more leverage in trying to cajole an applicant to applying them, but ultimately, there's not a whole lot of difference there. But you're right, that a handout, a guideline based on our code requirements, or just based on best practices, is, doesn't need to go through the same process for approval and codification as something that we put in the code.
So the one way I would see this working, and Dave jump in if this is totally off-base from how we would do this, we, the guidelines that would be in the code would be more along the lines of, these are the, these are the outcomes that are to be achieved. So it'd be more statements, and it would be up to the planner who's doing that review to make sure that whatever's being proposed, in their opinion, in their professional experience, meets those objectives. Then we could have this, some sort of a handout that would go with that as an example, so that doesn't have to be amended with the code, but it would show them some ways that that could be done, that would be readily acceptable to the planner who's doing the review, so that they wouldn't have to make that call every single time. Then if they deviated from that, the planner would have that discretion to say, well, yes, this is doing what we needed to do, or this is not, and here are some other ways that you could do that. That would be the way that I would envision that working. And I don't know if, generally, is that how we do that with design guidelines that we have right now, say, in the downtown?
Yeah, I think that, that is, that when it's in the code, it's, it is right there in front of the reviewer, and as opposed to being in a separate document like, like a handbook.
The key is writing those guidelines that are in the code in such a way that it is clear what the expectation is. Because that's where the applicant is really looking for some certainty. They don't want to have to guess at what the city's looking for. And certainly, we don't want to make them have to guess at it either. So that's where something like this as a supplement to that, but outside of the code, can be very helpful.
So your clear objectives and outcomes would go into the code?
Right.
And then, okay.
Along with anything that is prescriptive. So if there are some prescriptive ones that go with that, it's all in that section.
Okay. Well, I'm comfortable with this, I like it. That was one of my concerns, was if we just give them a little book and say, hey, kind of make it something like this, and then they just have other ideas, what teeth does the city have to, you know, to kind of rein them back in? And it sounds like if, if in the planner or the director's judgment, it's not meeting that objective, then you guys have the ability to steer them a little bit, and okay.
I was just thinking, so once, you know, we decide on what these are, and this is, I guess, this kind of thinking ahead, but to planning commission in the future, I think, I don't, I guess, it would, in a perfect world, this would be the scenario for everything we decide on. But I do feel like this is going to be a kind of a game changer in a good way, I think it's really exciting, it's going to create a lot of, a lot of new affordable housing in the city, in all areas, and not all areas of the city, or at least giving the opportunity for that. And, but I would love to have something like, two years after we decide on it, where it comes back to Planning Commission, and staff kind of just says, oh yeah, we've had 15 ADUs built, it's going really well, or here's some things we maybe want to look at, you know, tweaking. So, so it's not like something in the books, and then it just kind of, because I do think it could potentially change some things, and I wouldn't want it to go too long before we address maybe some of those issues.
Okay, that's all good feedback. Let me just kind of reiterate this general sense of what I heard and give some ideas about what we can come back with. Hearing general direction to focus more on guidelines than prescriptive measures, we may come back with some examples of prescriptive measures that could be included, if you wish, and then, and then there's also some interest in guidelines that wouldn't be codified, but would be more of a educational material, and we can try to present them in ways that could go either way, so that the commission can, can make a recommendation at the, at the public hearing in January. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, and just, do Dave, you could think, you don't necessarily have to come back to us, but, or Michael, I do think it's an, this is my opinion, I do think it's an interesting idea to maybe think about having different setbacks for different zones, because I do feel like there's no, it may be a way of helping these type of ADUs be more accepted in certain neighborhoods, rather than, because I think they are, the downtown is very different than, you know, 9600 in certain areas. So I feel kind of like, there's a lot of ways, at least with staff guidance on a particular project, there, maybe it's more of one of these guidelines rather than a prescriptive, but they say, well, have you thought about, you know, moving it back a little bit more? You have this huge yard, why are you putting it way back as far as you can, you know? Is that necessary? And might it be a little bit better for the abutting properties if it's set back a little bit further? I don't know. That would be my request.
We can definitely look into that.
Okay, thanks. It may be a really, really bad idea, but if you could look at it, that'd be great.
Okay. I think that, that covers that item, so.
Great. Thanks commissioners for all those good comments. I guess with that, we'll move into old business, and today we have the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update. And with that, am I handing this over to Dave, or?
Actually to Deborah.
Actually to Deborah, that's okay, that's what I thought, maybe.
So just a real quick introduction. This is Deborah Monkberg. As you probably know, Bruce Blackburn is our senior planner, and he's been our Canyon, one of our Canyon Park folks for quite a while. He is on a couple of months' leave, he'll be back after the first of the year. Deborah agreed to come on for a couple of months part-time to keep the project moving. We're in the phase, she'll explain where we are in that, in that project, but Deborah and I have worked together for many, many years. She's got a lot of experience, public and private sector, and we're just very appreciative and happy to have her on board and helping us out with this. So she's going to give you an update on where things are going with the Canyon Park Plan Update, and next steps in the Planning Commission involvement in that.
Thanks, Mike. It's really happy to be here, it's been a pleasure for the past couple of months. I know Bruce is raring to go to come back, so you'll see him soon, I'm taking this over. As Mike said, I just wanted to give a kind of a short update on the Canyon Park Subarea planning process. And just as a reminder, just put up kind of an overview map of this area. The darker blue line, that you can sort of see a little bit up to the north, and down on the southeast and south boundaries, encircling the whole area, that is the entire subarea, Canyon Park Subarea. And that's an area of about a mile and a half, square miles, 1.5 square miles. The other area that's significant within this subarea is the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, and that's the area that you can kind of see with the red line around it. And in some cases, the two are the same, but you can sort of see where the Regional Growth Center, especially in the south, cuts out some of the residential area, that's a part of the subarea. And then to the north, there is that large wetland complex, it's part of the North Creek Corridor. And then along 527, there's a retail area that's anchored by Fred Meyer. So just wanted to sort of identify that there's kind of two areas that we're looking at here, is the full subarea, and then with a real focus on the Regional Growth Center, which is, as it says here, about 735 acres, so it's about 1.1 or 1.2 square miles. And contains, as of 2010, about a third of the city's employment base. The other thing that I think is really significant about this area, and really interesting, is the critical areas that are here. You see in the green here, some of the wetland, and you can kind of see a little bit of the stream as it's coming through from north to south, through more or less the center of the subarea. There's about, I think, I think I saw it was around 230 acres of wetland stream corridor area in this subarea, so it's a significant amount of area within the subarea. And then you can see a lot of the industrial buildings that are developed in the center of the Regional Growth Center. So that's just kind of by way of helping you get oriented a little bit. Wanted to touch on, I think the last time that this came to the Planning Commission was back in July, when Bruce gave a briefing on the visioning process that was very close to being completed, but wasn't quite complete. And since then, it's been finalized, and we put a link to the report in the memo that was sent you, but we also have, that'd be great, we also have hard copies for you tonight. And just to, again, touch on kind of the, the main sort of direction of that vision, I've highlighted sort of the five major points that were part of the vision statement. The first one being that this area should be an economic driver. And what the vision talks about there is that it should be a regional hub for businesses, and particularly calls out life sciences and biomedical industries, and also calls out this being a place for innovation and growth. So an interest in continuing to have places for startup businesses within this area. It also talks about a multifaceted neighborhood, and what that means by that is a diverse mix of housing, office, retail, and public space, and in particular, housing that's affordable and meets the need of the local workforce. And kind of the third major theme that's discussed in here is being connected to the natural environment, and that's relating back to both the wetland area and the stream that we talked about, as well as the very steep slope and the forested edge on the east side of the Regional Growth Center. Really, having a vision that emphasizes the importance of the wetlands, the creeks, and the interconnected trails through the subarea. And then lastly, transportation hub, again, focusing on multimodal transportation in here, taking, trying to make sure that this area takes real good advantage of the improvements to transit that are happening out in this area, as well as providing for a really strong bicycle and pedestrian circulation with this, within this area. So it will serve both those that are coming in here to work, as well as those who are living within and near the subarea. So those are kind of the high points of the vision report. Also within that report, you'll see there's a lot of good data, background research, outreach that happened as, through the course of developing that vision. And so the vision that's established together with that direction really provides some good, a good sort of launching point for actually starting in on the subarea planning process and the development regulations, which is what we've started in on now. We've just, we've got, just gotten under contract with a consultant that's been selected to work on this with us, and they have begun work with some research and some kind of existing conditions analysis right now. But the major pieces of the work that they're, that we're looking at in their scope of work are first to develop some land use scenarios for us, and those are different scenarios that will define kind of the mix and the type of uses, and the location of those uses within the subarea. Potentially looking at adjustments to some of the Regional Growth Center boundaries. So where there's area where there's more intensive development, perhaps that could be pulled in, where there's areas where there's a lot of constrained lands, such as the large wetland areas, perhaps that should be taken out. Just kind of looking at and testing some of those ideas. The other piece will be an environmental review, which is really taking those three scenarios, or the three scenarios that are developed, and looking at, what are the impacts of those scenarios? What, what's significant, what kind of mitigation could happen, how should the scenarios be changed? And how can our findings from that kind of analysis help inform what we want to do with the subarea plan? Which leads us to that next step, which is really developing a draft subarea plan, testing that out with the Planning Commission and with the larger public, and then coming back and developing a refined subarea plan. Similarly, sort of launching off of the subarea plan, developing some draft development regulations for this area. And for this phase of work, the development regulations will probably be in more of a outline form, as opposed to fully developed. So we've got, we're developing the policies, and then starting to pull from that, what's the framework of how the development regulation should look? And then the fifth kind of major element of the work is public engagement, which is just really woven through all of the tasks in the scope of work, but, and provide for things like smaller focus group discussions with some of the key stakeholders, broader outreach, open houses, public workshops, potential for perhaps some interactive work, or interactive comment through the project website, as well as public meetings here with the Planning Commission. So that's kind of really high level, the process that we're going to be focusing on for the next year or so. And this is a timeline that shows the more broken down scope of work that we're working with, and just a rough estimation of the duration of some of these tasks. And you can see that the work here is very much front-loaded for the first half of 2019, and that's in part because we have now the team and the kind of the horsepower to really do all that work during that time period, but also because the funding for this project has some budget and deliverable deadlines that hit the end of June. And so we're really focused on getting a lot of work done in the first half of the year, and then following through with a draft subarea plan, and some revised regulations in the latter half of the year, wrapping up in the fourth quarter, this phase of work. The next phase of work after that, this, will include finalizing the environmental review process, finalizing the subarea plan, and completing the development regulations and finalizing those prior to hearings and adoption through the city. And as we're proceeding forward, really anticipating coming back to the Planning Commission at several kind of key points over the course of this year, at a time when we've got a good body of materials together that are preliminary for you to take a look at. So we're thinking when we have kind of draft land use scenarios prepared, coming and bringing that, when we've done the initial analysis and have some preliminary findings on the environmental review, bringing that back, and so we can have some discussion about how that, what that tells us about the scenarios. Bringing back the preliminary subarea plan and the regulations, and then in the latter part of the year, the revised subarea plan. So that's our plan going forward, we just wanted to share that with you, and happy to answer any questions.
And you can see, we actually have one of our planning commissioners reviewing that, so.
There you go.
Gosh, yeah. Didn't know that picture was taken. You guys have any questions or comments?
This is exciting. So Dave, I'm kind of thinking back to the whole downtown plan process, and I mean, is this kind of like a downtown digest, which is kind of the starting point of that whole process? And do you see, I mean, is, is there a lot of parallels between what we did, what we're doing here and what we did for the downtown plan, or is this a little bit different?
It is different. There are some parallels, but it is different as well. The downtown digest was really just a compilation of existing conditions. This really goes beyond that to outline the vision for Canyon Park. With downtown, we formed the, well, two citizens committees that were really involved with the Planning Commission, and as we went through a series of roundtables, the stakeholders in Canyon Park are a little bit different. There's the Canyon Park Business Association are a key stakeholder, so, so we're working within that, that existing framework more than establishing a new and separate stakeholders committee in this case. But there are other similarities, we are looking into, doing a planned action EIS, but also looking at, there are some options available now that we're looking into as well. available now that we're looking into as well. So it may not be exactly the same, but we're looking at a similar strategy that would help streamline the permitting process as development goes forward. Anything else?
I wanted to jump in and say, one of the things that's really distinctive about this planning process is the designation, the regional designation as a Regional Growth Center. And that's something that is established by the Puget Sound Regional Council. And it confers some real benefits in terms of being able to get some future funding for improvements, transportation improvements in particular to this area. And part of the city's obligation here is to show that they have something, I think they're called activity units. We have to be able to show, the city needs to be able to show that there's capacity for certain thresholds of activity units, both for employment and for housing. And some of that's going to need to drive how we think about the land use pattern out there. The other thing I just wanted to mention that's kind of unique, I think, about this center is that as we've been looking around at other quasi-business park industrial areas in this area and actually nationwide, there aren't very many that are active, successful, thriving centers, as this one is, where there is a concerted intent to sort of intervene and help create a more lively center with residential development, kind of this idea of a mixed-use center. More often, what we're seeing are industrial centers that are kind of inclined, and the public sector then steps in to develop a plan to kind of rejuvenate. So this, I think this is a particular challenge to make sure that we preserve and kind of enhance what's there that's really good while also sort of helping to kind of stoke it up and build it further. And so it's unique, and I think it'll be a really interesting process.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, and on that note, just other centers that may be similar. I know Austin, Texas, has one called The Domain, which is kind of now in the north side of, part of town. It's worth giving a look at. It's booming. It's, it's basically used to just be a kind of a warehouse district, research facilities, very industrial, very ugly. And now it's an extremely popular place to live. They're, they're building a ton of units there. And it's basically, it's a regional growth center like this. I don't know if it's actually called that, but The Domain, it's, it's a good representation of what could happen here. Deborah, thanks for that great presentation and thanks for the handout. I don't know if there's been any talk of this with the groups that have met, or I just think it'd be a real lost opportunity if, maybe there'd be some like development incentives for this or something, but I'd love to see a bunch of solar arrays atop a lot of some of the new construction and/or other ways to address renewable energies for that area with this. I think there's a, there's a lot of potential there. We have a lot of tall trees in the northwest, but a lot of these buildings are going to be, you know, won't have that restriction. I think it's just, it's just a great opportunity. So, thanks.
I guess tagging along wishlist items. I don't know if any thoughts have been given to this, but it seems like this would be another opportunity for leveraging for affordable housing. So I don't know if that's already been talked about, but just, I'd just throw that out there.
Yes, when we added the RAC designation back in 2015, Arch made a strong effort to include an affordable housing requirement with that. That didn't happen, so we have some challenges about how to do that. But that, that's one good, good thing that Mike is here also for this item, because that is going to be a focus and a challenge as we move forward.
One other thing that I brought up a few times, but would like to see included if at all possible, is TDRs or some way to incentivize bonus density, offsetting it with, you know, funding parks or preserving areas even outside of our city. I just think that's a good, can be a win-win situation.
Yeah, and I was at, and Dave on that note, and Michael and Deborah, I was a couple times in the past, like to start visiting again, but the Sustainable Land Strategies in Snohomish County. I know they've had Nick with Forterra there quite a few times, and he's, I think he was very interested. I remember, I've been meaning to talk to, it was a while ago, but he was interested in talking about TDR with the city. So Nick with Forterra with regards to like farms up in Skagit County, North Snohomish County.
And part of the vision is identifying it as a transportation hub. I don't think it's any news to anyone that the transportation corridors here are quite crowded and overloaded. So I hope that that's well incorporated, and in particular, the park and ride lot. As with the other park and ride in Bothell is full very early. And if we do want to get people out of those single occupancy vehicles, we need to have the capacity. So I would hope we, we look toward expanding the transit accessibility, both into and out of the area, which requires that park and ride to be improved.
Deborah, I thought one of your points was key, just that we already have a thriving business park. And you've already stressed that that's going to be a key focus moving forward, but I, I think we've all been saying that kind of throughout. We just don't want to lose our business center. And I know Seattle Genetics is expanding massively, as are a lot of the other businesses in there. We definitely have to meet our population growth targets, but it's going to be a tough synergy. Not tough, it'll be an opportunity, but yeah, that was a good key point. I appreciate that.
All right. Anybody else have, oh, Roger.
I just have a quick question about the document. I'm looking at page 49. And I just noticed in the, in the legend there, it talks about the North Creek flood area. I don't, it could be because I need stronger glasses, but I don't necessarily see where that's at on the map. Maybe it's under another, one of the purple areas. Does anybody know where that's at? Page 49?
Yeah, it's subtle. It's a gray area that essentially follows North Creek. The biggest part is up in the northwest, extending out of the northwest part of the subarea, near the central part. And there's another part in the southeast.
Okay, I got you.
That light gray color.
It's sort of, it, it sort of follows.
It's under another color, so it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you. Okay.
It kind of follows, you can see the branches of the stream there.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I think page 27, exhibit 21 indicates flood plain and floodway a little more easily identifiable.
Yes.
Has there been, has there been any talk of removing, I was just, because Deborah, I think you alluded to the fact they're still kind of reviewing and maybe thinking about the area. Were you, about the, the actual delineations of, I just noticed that, I know that there's that big area right down, right off of 228, just north of it. Well, there's basically nothing now. Would that be a considerate, yeah. Would that be a consideration for something that might be removed? Or is it an opportunity maybe to bring into that and use it as a more active space? I don't know.
Well, I think, yeah, that's definitely, I think the areas that are constrained especially are the ones that we'll want to take a look at and look at under different scenarios as possibly removing some of those.
Thanks.
I guess similar to David's point, I don't know if it's currently, if zoning allows, but mixed-use development north of the red boundary, so the Fred Meyer development, but there's a lot of retail going in that space. It seems like mixed use would make sense up in that area as well.
That is an area that we've talked about expanding. So we're looking at contracting in some areas and potentially expanding.
All right. Commissioners have any other additional comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Deborah, for that. It's really great to have you with us. And good to hear about Bruce. Look forward to having him back as well. Staff reports?
Thank you. So just a few items, wanted to give you an update on council action last night. You've been busy doing several ordinance reviews and recommendations to the council. So they were busy last night. We had three public hearings, some of which had come through the commission, not all of them. So we had public hearings on the four code amendments having to do with site plan, grading, retaining walls, and then administrative code that was not part of your purview or recommendation, but I think you got a briefing on that along with the other three. That was, I think Bruce brought that back, brought that to you in earlier this fall. Then Dave's presentation last night on the downtown code amendments, and I'll let him talk about that in just a second. And then also, we had the school impact fees that were on the council agenda last night in a public hearing on that, which again, that's not within this group's purview, but I thought you might be interested in what happened with that. So the, for those first four, the site plan, they were all approved basically as recommended by the commission, the one change being something I mentioned last month about the slope. The commission's recommendation was two and a half to one. The council, we asked for direction on that at the briefing, and they directed us to do the three to one slope. So that's what was included in what was adopted for them. Otherwise, all of the other amendments that the commission recommended were approved by the council last night. So we will have site plan review, a separate distinct process at the beginning, starting in early, late December, early January, when the code goes into effect, along with the additional requirements for grading, retaining walls, and the building permit review. So that was a big lift for the commission. I know a lot of work went into that, and the council was also very appreciative of the work on that. Excuse me. The request from the North Shore School District was to go with an increase in the school impact fee. The current fee is $10,000, $10,563 for a single family, zero for multi-family. And the request was to go to $16,038 for a single family per unit and $1,818 for multi-family. The council discussed that, pardon me, talked about what adjacent jurisdictions are doing. So currently, both King County and Snohomish County have adopted those fees for the unincorporated areas that cover the North Shore School District. Woodinville and Kenmore, the other two jurisdictions within the school district, are currently using the previous fee, which was just for single family, the $10,000. But they're going to be considering the higher fees in 2019. Sorry, too many numbers running through my head right now. So the council did approve the request from the school district to increase those fees effective the first of the year, when our new fees go into effect. The school district had also requested that the city collect those fees. Currently, we have the school district collect the fee, and then the applicant provides us with some proof that they have paid the fee when we take the application in. Most jurisdictions collect the fee. We will be looking at that next year as well. So that's an administrative change, procedural change for us. That's not something that would come through the Planning Commission, but we do recover the cost of doing that administration. So I have a couple of other things, but I'll let Dave talk about the amendments. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah, just one quick clarification. Was it 1,100 for multi-family unit, per unit?
1,818 per unit.
Per unit.
Yes.
Thanks.
So on the downtown plan and code amendments, the council adopted the Planning Commission recommendation with the exception of the West Maywood frontage, which they decided to retain the 20 unit per acre density limit. So as you recall, that was a close vote, a split vote at Planning Commission, and council did choose to keep that as it is. So, but the, I think the, the big news from last night is for the first time now Bothell has adopted an affordable housing requirement. It applies to the West Hill, what we call the West Hill frontage, and the general commercial to SR 522 corridor rezone. So I'd like to give a lot of thanks to Arch for their, they did the heavy lifting on the affordable housing requirements and calculations to determine what, what made sense there. And, and we'll start working shortly to make sure that we're positioned to handle applications that, and manage applications that, that come forward, that, that do incorporate affordable housing or pay fees that will go towards affordable housing and will be relying on Arch to a great deal to help with that.
So the only other things I had, reminder that the application deadline for interest in board and commission positions is this Friday. I think it's midnight. It's an online application. So as I, last I heard, we did not have very many applicants. I think we've had, what was it, maybe 10 or 12 total for all of the boards and commissions? And about half of those were for the parks board. So, you know, whatever we can do to make this more attractive to people, I don't know, but, you know, to try to encourage more folks, if you know of anyone who's interested, make sure they know the deadline is this Friday.
Recommend maybe a thousand bucks a month?
We'll look into that. You missed the budget deadline for the next biennial though.
I'd like to reinforce that. And if anyone's out there watching, still watching on TV after an hour and a half, we want you.
Yes, yes.
And particularly, we're interested in getting, we'd like to see a much, a more diverse pool of applicants. So if you see, if you're not seeing faces like yourselves around the boards and commission tables, please do consider applying.
And the council will be doing interviews for those positions, I believe, January 8th, and then making appointments the following week. So any vacancies would be filled immediately. Any, any others that are terming out or leaving at the end of their term would go into effect April 1st. So that's, again, as Dave said, we encourage people to apply for all of those positions. The calendar in your packet for the January meeting, January 16th, we have a couple of items listed on there. There's one more I wanted to make you aware of, that we may or may not add to the agenda. It kind of depends on how things go. We are working under a tight deadline right now because of an FCC ruling having to do with small cell wireless facilities. This affects all cities, counties throughout the country, and we have to get something in place by January 14th. So we are taking an interim ordinance to the council on January 8th. This is actually an area I believe is not within the commission's purview for reviewer recommendation of the council in any case, but we may be bringing something back to you. We'll certainly come to you with a briefing. So we may do that on January 16th, just to keep you abreast of what's happening, because it does affect certain design guidelines and things that we're looking at, particularly in some of our key areas like the downtown. So we want to certainly make you aware of that. Then, yeah, just want to echo what, what Dave said about all of Arch's work, and Mike in particular, with the affordable housing work that was done. This was, as Dave said, this was, this was an important milestone for the city. This is something the council has been looking for, for a while, and we were able to deliver on that with the help of the commission as well. So thank you for all of your, your good work on that. The council does appreciate that as well. They're very, always very good at expressing their appreciation to the commission, the boards and commissions for their work and making recommendations to them. So on behalf of staff, I also want to thank you and also wish you all happy holidays. So we'll see you next year.
Question in the city manager's email, there was reference made to scheduling advisory committee meetings.
Yes.
Possibly making some coincide for, you know, savings on security matters and all that. Any progress on that? Any thoughts on changes in the upcoming year?
Thank you for asking. I meant to mention that and I forgot, because it really isn't going to affect the Planning Commission at this point. We are looking at, there are some other boards and commissions that meet on different nights, so we're looking at combining those. It probably won't affect any of the ones that our department supports. Excuse me. And I, and I anticipate the Planning Commission will probably stay where it is. You're already starting at six o'clock, which is one of the, the things that we're trying to get all of the boards and commissions to.
So do, you know, our format that we meet in, there's, there's representatives, representatives from the city staff that are, you know, kind of guide us along. Is that similar to how all the boards operate, or are there, so all of them have some kind of input or?
Some level of staff support.
Yeah, okay, okay.
You probably have more than most. Because you're, no, because you're, because you're really important and very special.
Let's see, thank you very much, Michael, for that. I know we previously in the past, I think we were used to meet at 6:30, we moved at 6:00. I want to thank the commissioners. I know we've had, we have people who work in Seattle, people are very busy, a lot of family things going on, and I really want to appreciate, let you guys know that I really appreciate that, because that 30 minutes may not seem like a lot, but it was, I think we've made it work now, but I know it's still, it's still tight, but kind of dips into dinnertime and stuff like that, but I think it's, it's the right thing to do. All right, no reports from members. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd happily make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Have a great holiday, and we'll meet up in the new year.